Don't wake me up.
They do. Carla, I'm ready.
Give me one second. And that was our camera person, so give her a second.
Okay.
To get back.
Seems lonely up here.
Yeah.
Josh, do you have an up-to-date booklet at home? So, yeah, okay, because I have one, but I looked through it today or each time and half the stuff is missing, so we go online.
Well, Seth?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, welcome to the Town of Cumberland Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, we have five members here, which is a quorum. We're missing a couple, but they will be back. Just doing personal stuff. So, first item of order, minutes from our last meeting. So I hear a motion.
I will make a motion that we adopt the minutes as written.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So, staff site plan approvals, we did have one major staff site plan approval that town staff and myself and our town engineer, which was Dan Diffin in this case, reviewed and all seemed fairly straightforward. So, moving on, item E, minor change approvals, there were none. Item F, hearings and presentations for tonight. First is a public hearing for an amendment to an approved subdivision for Ocean View at Cumberland LLC Phase Two to change a culvert and associated road profile locator on Greeley Road, tax map R zero four, lot thirty-four A in the RR one, senior housing overlay. Applicant is Ocean View at Cumberland LLC, John Wazaleski, Representative Fred Light. And so first, Carla, anything you want to add?
No, pretty straightforward, housekeeping change, culvert replacement, but it did trigger some environmental review. Rick Greeley has some sort of a presentation to provide.
A microphone, Carla.
The computer.
Yeah.
All right, before we move on to Fred, any questions for Carla from the board?
Well, only is DEP the only outstanding item?
It is.
Okay, because Army's good, right?
Army is good, right?
Okay, take it away.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, if you give me a second.
Speak into the mic if you would.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll see if I can get this thing teed up. Find my cursor. Okay, okay. I think it's going to be a pretty brief presentation and thanks for, actually, it's nice to come to a live meeting. I'm pinching, I'm pinching myself saying that, I said that just the other night in another town. When, like, when did you sort of want to go back to a live meeting thinking it would be nice to be home, but Zoom meetings just don't cut it, I'm sorry.
Agreed.
Anyway, thank you. So on behalf of Ocean View at Cumberland LLC, we also have Chris Wazaleski and Christian Haynes, as you well know, from the team, if there are any questions. What we're here for, I think, is more of a technical issue than a planning issue. During the review of the pending, after final approvals or DEP, the core, the town, as we got into the shop drawings and submittals for the culvert on the stream crossing, which is right here, this is for edification. This is Little Acres Drive, right here is the end of Phase One. We cross over the so-called former Fifty and we're into the Phase Two. And this is Little Acres Drive extension all the way back up to the farm, Leonard Drive and Monarch. This is that stream that comes from the mainstream that comes from the golf course and exits through the Araro tracks, right through here, right through here. And this culvert right here was sized as a large box culvert, sixteen foot by eight foot. And when our geotechnical engineers, someone engineering, looked at it and, well, we knew there was going to be some settlement, I mean, it's clays. There was an unacceptable level of settlement that was going to cause some consternation. So, we went back with our geotechnical engineers and looked at different options for a culvert. And this is the stream, by the way, that this is about a hundred feet up from the culvert crossing and this is the existing little walking path bridge which we're going to keep just below it. So it gives you a sense of what that stream looks like. And what we did is we went from, we ended up with a arched, metal arch culvert, which is shown in, I've got a couple of pictures I could just show you for schematic. But this went from a big box culvert to one of those metal arches which will have the head wall on it and it'll have footings underneath it. So, and that was from a settlement perspective, was more acceptable to the geotechnical engineers and to our situation. And number two, we were able to reduce the fill over the culvert by dropping the road grades a little bit through here. This is the former grade in the red and we were able to drop it at the culvert about three feet. And that saved, number one, it saved on fill, saved on the height of the, there's walls on either side, on the stone strong walls, it lowered the walls and just made for a better situation over the culvert. But what it required for us to do that was, because we have utilities, is to get the approval of Portland Water District for reduced fill, or cover over the pipe, which they gave us down to, I think, four and a half feet minimum cover, which gave us the ability to drop that profile. So, basically, that's the change. And again, another blow up of the area, here's the stream coming down through, here's the culvert. It's about sixty feet long, it'll have beveled ends, I'll show you a picture. And these are the walls that, as we cross the culvert, similar to the two culverts that were done in Phase One, these will be the, like, stone, stone strong walls. And what that does is, by using the walls, very costly, but it reduces the, you know, the fill that would have otherwise splayed out into the wetlands if you used a fill slope. And this is our focal point, we have a big stormwater focal point area here. So the only change is the culvert and the lowering of the road, another blow up with the stream coming this way, just for edification. And this is what the culvert will look like in the red, you know, matching up with the walls, it will be a head wall on either end poured in place. And this is sort of a pic, this is the shop drawing, this is what it will look like, something like this, with the culvert, arch culvert, which is twelve by six, stream bed below. And then we, it keeps the stream channel open, which is the whole idea, even with the box culverts, you know, we, you end up filling the bottom, the clamp, you fill the bottom two feet with sediment to keep a natural stream corridor, so you're not actually having concrete on the bottom. It's the, it's the Corps of Engineers and the DEP, that's the way, the correct way to do culverts. And so the open bottom culvert requires, you know, separate footings, but it leaves the bottom of the stream completely open, which is, it's just a good thing from the core and the DEP perspective. So, at this point, we have our Army Corps amendment and we are simply waiting for the DEP amendment. If the board's willing to conditionally approve, you know, pending DEP. Yeah, they are drafting it, they're working on it, they just don't have it quite ready yet, but we expect it pretty thoroughly. And that ends my presentation, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, questions from the board?
Just real briefly, on the fill on top of the arch, is that like gravel or what's the type of fill?
Through the chair, the fill on top was specified by the Geotech engineer, someone engineering, to be a granular, a granular borrow, sort of, it's going to end up being a gravel, but it's a granular material specified by the, by the Geotech. And that'll, that'll come right up to the sub, sub base of the road, which is, you know, a type D gravel.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, good point, yeah, good point from Chris, that this will all be, as the other ones were, were done, this will all be inspected in the field so that everything is brought up and listed and done very carefully, the Geotech will be on, on board when that happens.
Thank you.
And where do the utilities pass?
The utilities pass, this is a side view again, we have, it's hard to read, this is the culvert, this box here, looking from an end view, if you're, you know, sort of used to reading profiles. This is the culvert down low in the stream channel. And then we have storm drainage, which is the blue, and behind, above that, on one side, we have water and you don't, it's hard to read this. And we have a force main and a, and a, electrical is up, up higher up here, there might be a better.
So it's below the road bin?
Below the road bin, so if this is the culvert here, if everyone can sort of see this, this is the culvert looking, you know, upstream, downstream. These sort of represent the walls on either side. And the road section, twenty-two, twenty feet, I think, and then the sidewalk and curbing. The water sewer, electric will be over here and storm drain will be between the pipe and the road, not under it.
Okay.
And gas, thank you, and gas as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing for anybody who wants to make comment. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. So, there's no additional requested waivers, correct? So do we have to just read the two findings, new findings of fact and, go ahead?
Before we get to, I'll make a motion to waive the reading except for these two. But, do we need to make mention, assuming that we make a motion to approve, do we need to make mention of the prior proposed conditions of approval or just this one additional?
As I said in the beginning of the findings, they're all the same as they were.
No, proposed, the condition of approval.
The conditions, oh, okay. You can make reference to them.
Should we know how many were in the prior?
I don't have them handed.
I'll figure it out. Okay, I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of fact, except for findings N and O, given the fact that none of the other findings have changed.
Second.
Discussion. Can we vote on that before we read them? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we haven't, you, we haven't.
We're not there yet.
We're getting there.
Okay, so I will go through N and O and the findings of fact. So stormwater, a stormwater management plan was submitted as part of the application packet and has been reviewed by the town engineer for conformance to chapter two fifty dash thirty-eight of the Cumberland subdivision ordinance. The use of an alternative culvert structure, which is the reason for this amendment, has been reviewed and approved by the town engineer. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers will need to issue a modified permit, the receipt of which is a proposed condition of approval.
Excuse me? Oh, my God. It should not be U.S. Army Corps, it should be Maine DEP, that's a correction to the finding.
The first one as well?
The first one as well, yeah.
Okay, Maine DEP will need to issue a modified permit, the receipt of which is a proposed condition of approval. Based on the information provided and with the proposed condition of approval, the standards of this section have been met. Freshwater or wetlands, all wetlands within the proposed subdivision have been delineated and mapped by Mark Hampton Associate, Inc. and are shown on the project plans. The applicant has submitted revised plans to Maine DEP and is awaiting approval. Based on the information provided and with the proposed condition of approval, the standards of this section have been met.
I will make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as amended.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous?
I will make a motion that we approve the amendment to an approved subdivision for a culvert change with Cumberland Crossing Phase Two. Tax assessor map R zero four, lot thirty-four A. Subject to the standard condition of approval, the limitation of approval and the single additional proposed condition of approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll move on.
Thank you, Fred.
So, item F, two hearings and presentations, so this is a sketch pants, plan review. Have we proposed seven lot subdivision locator on Tuttle Road, tax assessor map U eleven, lot four A in the town center district. Setback overlay two zone, applicant owner William Wyatt, Representative David Latham. Okay, and, so this is just a sketch plan, correct me if I'm wrong, so we're just looking for sort of guidance from the board to the applicant as to what we prefer potentially. And there is one waiver that we need to discuss, correct? Anything else you want to add?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just wanted to disclose that both the chairman and myself are on the Board of Directors of an abutter, SAD fifty-one, but don't feel that that's going to cause any issues at this stage.
Do you think we need to take a vote on that?
I'll make a motion that both Peter and Jason participate in this.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed, seeing none, two extensions, I guess, three zero two. Okay. So, no further questions of Carla from the board? All right, so.
Well, actually.
Go ahead.
I've read our attorney's message and it's, it's a good one, I think, that, a good reminder that, I mean, especially the, the aspect of when it could create a, if, without a waiver, could create an economic hardship. It has, my question is, has that occurred before where the exception or the waiver was created for that reason?
I can't recall that that's been done for that specific reason.
I was just curious if there was history of it, I, it was, again, a good reminder, I'd forgotten that language, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, just to sort of state what you're talking about here, the comments from our attorney said that the planning board may waive a standard if it finds either an unnecessary hardship will result with strict comply, will result from strict compliance with the subdivision standards or there are special circumstances of a particular plan that makes the standard inapplicable. So, and again, this is sketch plan review, so we're sort of just looking for information or input from the board as to what direction we go potentially and the feelings of people's feelings on this waiver. So I guess before we get to that discussion, turn it over to the applicant.
Hello, my name is, yeah, it is, my name is Eric Dubey, I'm a project engineer for Trillium Engineering Group. And, let's see, I have a, I do have a thumb drive.
Okay.
So, I'm assuming I can plug this in easily?
Right into the side of the monitor, do you see this?
Side of the monitor itself. So I've got three different versions of this, traditional with the buffer and, and then of course, the, forgive me on that, I forget what you guys call it. And then the, the cluster subdivision on that.
Eric, excuse me, as you go through this, could you identify the existing buildings? All we have on our information is that there's an existing building, Peter has mentioned one, but there are, what, three or four? If you would do that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, we'll do on that.
Thank you.
That's the cluster. Dated. All right, let me see if I can maximize this thing a little bit more. So, basically, we have, we have Tuttle Road, we have, I call it Doc's Cafe, I worked on that a few years ago when we, when we had that approved. And then, of course, we have the cemetery and then we have Main Street that's over here. And then, of course, the high school property is this property that's, that's back in here. So you have the existing homes that go down here until the entrance of the middle school. And we have a right-of-way here that we can basically access, this land that really is kind of hidden back there, behind the cemetery and behind the homes that are on Tuttle Road here. So, what we've taken a look at, without the seventy-five foot buffer that we're talking about or in question, what we've taken a look at is basically this configuration with, with setbacks and placed buildings, just to make sure the building envelopes could, could be utilized. And this is essentially the track we've been on with our client, so. This, this is kind of that first take. Is there any questions on, let me, let me ask you this, are there any questions specifically on this layout?
Yeah, the setbacks, I see are fifteen everywhere that you're proposing or what, what are they? I see fifteen in one spot and I don't see them identified in others.
Yes, I mean, they vary here.
So I see fifteen rear in the, in that first lot on the.
I see fifteen front on the second lot as well.
So it's up in the right-hand corner and I can't seem to zoom it in, I'm used to using Blue Beam at the office, so forgive me here, try not to mess that up.
Well, actually, I don't have to see it on here, but are you, is it fifteen on sides, back and front, is that what you're proposing?
We're meeting the setbacks in the zone.
The sides look like less on this drawing.
Well, the side, because we are in overlay, setback overlay district, correct?
Yeah, sides are ten here.
Sides are ten.
Front and back fifteen, sides are ten, as he's got it drawn here.
Back is twenty-five.
Not shown here, not what I'm looking, oh, I'm looking at the five houses. Let's see, seven houses, no, that's fifteen also, that's what I'm looking at.
So it looks like we've got fifteen show for the rear, but we're not near the fifteen, if it's twenty-five, forgive me.
Right, I, yeah, I don't see, you may have to adjust the envelopes, but.
Yeah.
I, it doesn't look to me like you got anything within twenty-five feet.
We're not up against the rear setbacks in any of these configurations.
Yeah, yeah, okay, in either one, okay, thank you.
Exactly, so, and then we go to the ten and the fifteen for the front and the side on that, so thanks for the clarification. So then, in the clustered subdivision, we would have this as open space, which would be adjacent to the high school. And then at that point, we would have five lots. And again, still with the same setbacks that we just discussed on that. And then the third layout that we were talking about, essentially, and this is really just pictorial, just to show you with this seventy-five foot buffer setback, which in, in, you know, I, I don't think it was really meant for this zone specifically, but, you know, it is in the ordinance and it is what, what is stated is basically this. So, with our road coming in, we really have room for essentially at that point, one lot. So it's one single, single lot, yes?
Um, why in the cluster does it drop to five lots?
Just taking out your net, net acreage, net residential.
With the open space.
Yeah, but that shouldn't, I mean, the whole, the clustered subdivision was designed to allow for the same number of lots.
Ten thousand, what's the?
I mean, that, that.
It's designed for that, but unfortunately with the smaller lots, it doesn't work out as well. With the larger lots, it works out because you can usually get your space and slopes and everything else, but for smaller lots, it doesn't necessarily work that way.
Carla, have you run the numbers on this?
I have not done net residential acreage. I think what he's saying is that once you factor in the road, drainage, utilities, that you just can't fit the seven lots, given that you've created open space, is that, is that what you're saying, Eric?
Yes.
Just one question regarding that, Eric, sorry to.
No, that's okay, I'm, I'm jumping around a little bit.
With the clustered division, with that open space, would you, if, if that were the preferred plan, would you then have a, a buffer between the development and the high school?
That's what we are showing there, but again, we're just really, this is sketch plans, so we're trying to figure out, I can tell you right now, with the five lot, financially, it's not going to work for our client, so.
Well, that's sort of what I was alluding to earlier, okay, go ahead.
So we're really trying to look at that seven lot configuration. And, and certainly, and, and this is a discussion, just so we're clear about that, you know, we're just really coming here for an opinion and trying to get some expertise from, from you folks regarding the zoning, you know, from, from my experience and over the years and just looking at, even though Cumberland is a rural town, you still have this kind of village atmosphere. And, and the zoning that we're looking at, I'll go back to the seven. For the seven lots, to me, this is, this is really what we're talking about, which kind of mimics, you know, when you start heading towards North Yarmouth and, and over towards the golf course, so. So, if we were to look at doing this, again, I know this is sketch plan application, we'd be getting utilities from the, from Tuttle Road, which would be water, sewer and, and then there, we've got plenty of site distance entrances, all that. Stormwater, we would have to utilize some underground stormwater control, we start losing our ability on lots. We could, we could probably find a spot, we haven't really, again, we haven't got that far into it, we didn't want to spend a lot of resources and time looking at that part of it until we, until we kind of get past this, this discussion of, of what we're allowed to do, so. Yes, sir?
I guess, when we conceived this conservation subdivision, I'm not quite sure we envisioned it for something like this. So, I mean, I, I'm certainly comfortable with the conventional. What I'm a little bit more uncomfortable about is that, is that we've kind of left no room there to buffer any of the, I remember, we're leaning kind of right up against the, the property lines. And, you know, I do know when we were planning to build a, a school, not necessarily there, but in the same area, that there was going to be a lot of buffering required. So I, I, I don't know how you get it, get it done within this design, but I, I think with Carla, with one of the seventeen standards, conditions of approval, one of them is buffering and I think once the, you know, all the, the abutters take a look at that, so that. So that's kind of a concern, but I do think the conventional subdivision makes sense. And as we get further into, I can understand why we want to waive the 75-foot. I just, I'm scared over the last 34 years of setting precedents. And my understanding is if Josh and everybody else words this thing right, we're not going to be stepping on any landmines. But that now with these new regulations that the state's coming down with, where we can basically put lots anywhere we want to. If we waive the setback, are we setting up some kind of a precedent that's going to turn around and bite us three or four years down the road? I mean, we've already seen with this food amendment, some unintended consequences that have jumped up and bitten us. But I know there's that unique circumstance clause that Josh uses. So I guess if we can figure a way around this, that we're not setting any kind of a precedent, I don't really have any difficulty in taking a look at it, but we've got to take a serious look at the buffering.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment, I agree with you on that. You've got to always be careful about that. I mean, I lived in Pownell for 20 years, so I know the rural character, that, you know, Cumberland, North Yarmouth, Pownell, you know, Durham, of what they're trying to achieve over the long run. And you've got to be cognizant of that. I was on the Pownell Planning Board for a number of years too, so. In this case here, I think the, it's hard to, when you do zoning planning and things like that, I think it's hard to take a broad brush stroke and say, you know, you need a 75-foot buffer, for instance. And that works great in a lot of areas where you have fields and a lot of open areas. But in these small lots that are kind of left over, it becomes tougher. So, and I'm certainly going to defer to, again, to your opinion and what you're looking for. But in this case here, on a case-by-case basis, which really we should be looking at these things. You know, you have the cemetery here, which is a great natural buffer. And then you have the high school, and certainly it's a perfect opportunity for like a walking path or something like that to extend over and be able to do that as families grow and have kids right in this neighborhood and be able to utilize the schools and the fields and things like that. I think we could easily set up within that 25-foot buffer, our perimeter, rear setback. I think we could easily set some buffers around the perimeter of this. And I know the client would be willing to certainly take a look at that.
Eric, when you say rear, on, again, the chart I, or the diagram I have, the rear to me looks like it's to the east. Are you talking about, are you identifying the rear setback as the one buff going to the high school?
Well, it depends on which lot you're talking about. If it's rear on the cemetery side, on these houses here, on the left, it's rear against this single residence that's over on this side. And then it's rear, in that case, it's rear inside on that particular one against the high school. But we would be willing to certainly do something against where the turnaround is.
And it would all be 25 feet?
Yeah, I think we could easily make that happen.
Because going, you know, waiving 75 feet isn't so hard unless it goes to 10 feet or some...
Sure.
And it'll be very interesting to hear public comments if we have any. So there's a big difference between what 75 goes to.
Yes, I would agree with you. And reality is, if I was going to be living in one of those houses, I'd probably want the buffer for me to the high school just as much as the high school would want the buffer, you know, from the houses.
Yeah, and the homes, regarding the houses, while you were on that, are these three-bedroom? What's envisioned?
Haven't been decided, but we just put like somewhere around a, you know, 2,500-foot, you know, typical. You know, houses can be between 2,000 and 3,000 square feet, depending on how you manipulate the garage and configure that, so. We try not to, so I don't think it's 1,500 square feet, but I don't think it's, or not 5,000.
So it's definitely not of what would be called affordable housing in the context of today's discussions in Augusta.
In today's discussion, prices, unfortunately, building material prices are just out of this world.
Thank you.
Do you have more specifics to go through?
No, just to kind of finish that thought, you know, obviously, these, you know, we could easily buffer on the engine drive coming in too. You know, the good thing is the traffic with seven houses, we're not talking about a huge traffic increase on this. So that helps out, but we could certainly, within the right-of-way, be able to do some buffering, especially on the frontage, so.
So I guess here's where I'm at on this. I think that the applicant certainly has a right to develop his land, but we have to balance that, I guess, with everybody else that lives around here. And of course, we do have ordinances. I am leaning towards the clustered subdivision model because anytime that we can sort of grab open space and keep it open space, I think we ought to do that for lots of reasons. I think that, I think these two sketches for me are kind of not really what we should be looking at. We should be looking at examples of sketches that do include certain buffers and not taking it down to 15 feet, because the buffers are important for many people that live around here. And I sort of fear, I'm not really a huge fan of what North Yarmouth did with those buildings so close to the road and cleared all that space. And they are beautiful houses, but now, you know, it just doesn't feel quaint. The trees are gone, there's no buffering, it's very close to the road. And I would like to try to avoid that here. So I kind of think in this instance that 75 feet is maybe not reasonable, but to go down to 15, I'm not a fan. I think that, you know, potentially, I'd like to see some sketch plans of traditional and clustered with a 50, or maybe we could compromise at, you know, potentially a 40-foot buffer or something if that really made a difference. But I think the buffering is important, especially with the school so close, and I'd be a fan of preserving the open space. And I don't believe, to me, in my mind, that this would apply to be a hardship. I mean, I kind of think that one house on that lot probably makes a fair amount of nice money. So I'm not sure that passes the straight face test for me. So those are my thoughts, I'm happy to hear from others. Josh?
In this specific, I think if there's a way to build in a 75-foot buffer down direction, but down to the houses on Tuttle or just off of Tuttle, then I might be open to smaller buffers, setbacks on the other sides. But Carla, I have a question. In the clustered subdivision, I think this may be the root of the issue in terms of why cluster doesn't work, but it doesn't jive with what's shown on the clustered subdivision. So, section 250-10, clustered subdivisions, are we in clustered or conservation? We're in a clustered, aren't we? Because we don't have...
Correct.
And maybe, we didn't rule out conservation, and maybe the wording is better, but it says minimum lot size. If the lots are connected to the public water and sewer systems, the minimum lot size for each single-family dwelling shall be 30,000 square feet. Now, on these clustered, I don't see them at 30,000 square feet. And I think that, there's no language in there, or, you know, or it doesn't get modified by the underlying district. So the underlying district has a 10,000-square-foot lot size. So it makes absolutely no sense that in a clustered subdivision, the minimum lot size is three times greater than the non-clustured subdivision lot size.
Yeah, I noticed that too earlier, that in the town center district, it's a 10,000, and here in 250-10, it's 30. Could you explain that discrepancy?
I can't, I'm not sure, what are you referring to?
Clustered was originally in other zones, I don't know if...
Well, it's the district standards that would rule the...
That supersede?
The overlay.
Correct, but we're talking about a clustered subdivision, not that...
Okay, so...
So the clustered subdivision minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet, which is three times greater than the zone's minimum, the underlying zone's minimum lot size.
I really think we're caught in a snafu, because everything in the subdivision ordinance is anticipating these subdivisions out in the rural residential districts. They weren't thinking they were in the town center district, so I don't know what to say.
Well, so here's my question, and I think we can. We've waived minimum lot size before for that, the house that's right up here, off of Tuttle. The 1836, you know, the one where they built the historical, and it would have only allowed one. And we allowed, it wasn't in the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size district, but we allowed that to, it was like one away or something.
Are you talking about the red house?
Nope, the two white houses, Drown Road, at Drown Road and Tuttle.
Oh, Drown Road, okay, Drown and Tuttle, yes, yes.
And we went down to either 5,000 or 10,000. I mean, to me, if we can waive lot size, my preference would be to do a clustered, actually pushed up to the high school and away from the residential. But doing, allowing for seven, because we're taking, by forcing a conservation or a clustered, assuming the conservation has similar language. And I'm not looking at that right now, so that may be an incorrect assumption. If you could fit seven in with some open space and put that open space towards Tuttle Road, that would be sort of my, I think, perfect desire.
Why push the open space towards Tuttle?
Because those are the residential abutters.
Okay, Peter?
Well, I think, I kind of like Josh's thoughts on that. I do think one of the things that we've tried to do over, let's say, the last 15 years, is really concentrate development within that center district. And I think we've seen that with Village Green. And I have no difficulty with putting seven houses in there, because I think that's where you want the density is right off Main Street and areas like that, and not doing these crazy subdivisions that are chewing up a lot of farmland. So from a theoretical and kind of town planning and development thing, I'm in favor of putting more lots in the center. And so I wouldn't have trouble with the seven if the spacing thing could be sorted out, because I think you are going to have a problem economically with five. And we do want development in the center. We, so I will defer to my more learned colleagues on some of this, but I think in the center denser is better.
All right, well, I mean, there is nothing that prevents a conservation subdivision from being built in a different district. Is that a correct statement?
No, I don't think it is correct. If you look at where they're allowed, it talks about in the rural residential one.
It said, well, it says conservation subdivision option. The conservation subdivision option replaces the clustered subdivision option in rural, in RR1 and RR2. It says nothing that it is not allowed in other districts. You can't do a clustered in RR1 or RR2. It doesn't say you can't do a conservation in other zones.
Yeah, and we have discussed that before, and I think nobody objected to that concept.
The net lot area table, your net lot area, that's your net residential, net acreage calculation, correct? So that's 86,000 square feet. You'd calculate the maximum number of lots allowed by taking that, dividing by the minimum lot size required, which would be 10,000 in the town center. So that would give you eight. The minimum lot size in the conservation shall be calculated by dividing 50% of the gross area of the parcel by the number of lots. So the minimum lot size is reflective, is affected by the total lot size, the total development size. So I think you'd be able to, I don't know if that's attractive to the owner to have even smaller lots, but it would allow for smaller lots, which would allow for seven, maybe even eight, just doing this off rough numbers, of lots in that parcel, but still have open space, which we could then maybe use as a buffer wherever it seems to make sense, to me.
And your thoughts specifically on the buffer, Josh?
I mean, my, in this one reading, I mean, my preference, my, is buffering those residential, the closest residential uses first. Again, if you've got 50% of the lot area as open space, you can move a lot of that buffer around. I mean, you can spread that buffer around. Because the buffer does count, correct, towards open space?
Yes.
So we could certainly take a look and manipulate some of these with the conservation, you know, and I know we've looked at it on the clustered. I guess what Mr. Bingham's talking about is really where we're kind of sitting in too, is that, you know, you're talking about town center, this is the perfect spot for this. You know, we're roughly around 10,000, but to get down to 5,000 or even 7,000 per lot, I mean, that's probably going to be a bit small for these houses, but we could certainly, you know, that's an option we can take a look at. With regards to the open space, as far as, you know, clustered or conventional, you know, being in the town center adjacent to the school, I'd say we have the biggest open space directly adjacent to us. So, you know, if we're really looking for an open space, which is meant to not only be a buffer, but also be a space that, let's just say, the association could use, I think they've got the, you know, the biggest advantage is being next to the schools and utilizing that as essentially our open space. Now, the buffers between, I mean, that is something that, I agree. I think it's something that you have to take a look at and say, okay, the buffers are there for a reason. But I would say in this instance, again, looking at just this particular lot with the cafe and a little bit of residential, we have a lot of space back there. I'm not saying that can't be developed, but, and then the cemetery and then the single lot, and really working on that. And of course, the school, we're talking about the maintenance shed in the back, and we're really not close to the school itself. I think we've got some good kind of natural buffers already. And again, we could, putting us down, let's just say, if we went back to the 40-foot argument, I mean, it's not going to be viable with road costs the way they are. With utilities, again, we've got the advantage of the water and sewer with the town center and with stormwater storage and things like that. And it's going to be, it's going to be very expensive per foot of road on this. So I don't necessarily agree with the hardship argument, I agree with you on that. I'm not, I mean, hardship's always subjective to me. I'm not, I mean, hardship's always subjective to me. But I would go with the natural character argument. I would say that's exactly, and I think that's, Mr. Bingham, you nailed it on the head. That's exactly what we're talking about for this specific district. Town center, you're talking about, you know, more dense lots. So I think a 40-foot, even a 40-foot buffer, I think is, I think it's too much. Maybe a 25 isn't enough, but, but I definitely think, I think we've got some opportunities to be within that 25 or 30 if we really wanted to.
So I personally, again, I'd like to see houses laid out on nice lots that are spaced properly, not jammed in on 5,000, 7,000 square foot lots. I mean, obviously, there's more money in more houses, but we ought to try to preserve just a great-looking neighborhood. I agree, the open space would be kind of cool to have towards the school and there's more opportunities for kids and whatever. But the buffer is a huge thing to me. We get, it's appropriate to try to preserve what others have. And so for me, the starting point is trying to draw something up at 50 feet and get creative moving around the houses and just see how that can work out. I mean, as I look at this, you know, 40 or 50 feet almost works in many of those. And certainly, it would probably work on the five-house plan. So that's where I'm at. This is not a public hearing, but be okay if we heard from public-
Yes, we did send a butter notices and I know we have an abutter here.
So I'll open up for public-
Wait a minute.
Oh, Anne? We'll come back.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I would expect to see this kind of development in the center of town, the traditional subdivision. I would expect to be seeing that type of development. I wonder, were condominiums or townhouses considered for this?
Yeah, we took a look at that. And that could still be an option. I think we looked at, you know, if you did that, you could possibly be in, you know, maybe the 14 range, you know, somewhere in there. But that's, you know, it's a different type of feel that we're talking about, so.
Right.
I mean, that could be a possibility. But I think we're still talking about, we're still talking about a buffer. I think the buffer is the issue itself.
True.
So I think, I think it comes down to what you folks feel comfortable of, you know, if this lot meets that, that type of development that you're looking for in the town center. And then if it does, I would, I would say for us strategically, we'd probably, and I'll have to talk to my client, but we'd probably come up with something that could work for us. And then, and then we'd probably go to the next step of showing actual real buffers at that point and then maybe come back in for sketch plan and do something that's, that, you know, could be, could be amenable. Because I think you have to see it on paper. I agree that it's always tough talking about this stuff, but I think we could, I think we could do something.
To say that we can't do it, you know, I'd just like you guys to sit down and see if we could fit it in. And then for me, if it came down to, you know, a 39-foot buffer or something versus putting up, you know, townhouses, to me, I'd rather have some, a nice little community there with freestanding houses.
Yeah, I-
I'm sorry, were you done?
Yeah, well, just one more comment. I would think for the abutters that the road itself would be the, especially going between those two houses, that that might be the more significant question. Or annoyance.
It is, except for the sale of the land from the abutter. So, yes, I know, it's always, it's always difficult.
On this plan, what is the road width?
The actual road width is meeting town standards, minimum town standards. I don't like to build roads too wide.
Paul, please.
So I, in summary, my thinking tonight at least is I would agree with Peter and Anne that I think smaller lots here in this location are fine. The buffer, to me, would be important. I'm interested, Carla, do you know the size of the lots in Wyman? Though that development?
I think they're 10,000.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I'm sort of thinking of this. Now, there, there's more space and a lot of buffering driving in or going towards the maintenance side, the Drown Road. But that works. I remember we've been in, I've been in a few of those homes back looking for somebody and people who were buying those homes know what the spacing is between homes. They know what they're getting. But if the buffer, if the buffering could work out so we're not imposing on especially residential places, I think I could certainly live with the traditional or something like that. But as you just said a minute ago, having, seeing it with much greater detail could really help. And of course, there are two people missing tonight, so in terms of a consensus, who knows? But, you know, it's got to start somewhere, right?
Thank you. Appreciate the comments.
Josh, go ahead.
Yeah. There's a fence that runs all along the school property, correct? So, you know, you may be abutting open space, but it's not accessible. Open space, number one. And I'm not necessarily against a traditional subdivision in this case, but just recognize that almost everybody in this town, when they do a subdivision, can make the same claim that I shouldn't have to do open space because it's right over there. And it's there because we keep enforcing it, so. But again, I'm not necessarily opposed to a traditional in this case. I think it is a unique.
Carla?
I had a question about the sewer easement in the back. I know it goes across the backyard of Mr. Campbell, who's here. He lives in the large house to the right. I thought David Trillian had told me that you were utilizing that easement, not coming off Tuttle.
That's not the plan right now, so I didn't specifically talk to David today about that.
Okay.
But that's not, not our plan.
And the other thing I just want to mention to the board is, is, you know, buffering can be distance, it can be vegetation, it can be fencing. So in this case, it's probably going to be a combination. Obviously, you don't have the distance. So fencing and maybe some vegetation with the fencing.
Okay, I'll bring you back to the board after. Public comment, is anybody here that'd like to speak on the matter? Introduce yourself if you would.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Joe Campbell. I live at 359 Tuttle Road, the house to the, that sits back to the right there. I've been, I've been here for about, in that house for about 18 years. And I just, first of all, I appreciate all that you do and I appreciate your desire to protect the residents that live around this potential development. Thank you for that. I, you know, I, I think it would be fine in my mind to have a nice-looking neighborhood of houses on this property. I'm not opposed to that. It would be important to me that it be done well and represent the town of Cumberland because I think that anything that you develop and build right in Cumberland Center certainly does that. It certainly represents the town. And so I like the fact that you're paying attention to the idea of having it represent Cumberland well. And I also really appreciate your consideration regarding buffering. And I do agree with Carla that that can be distance, but it can also be achieved well with the right kind of vegetation. There's a, there's an arbivitey, green giant hedge row between me and the parking lot of the school. And it works beautifully, you know, and so I, I sort of picture something like that being put in, and I think that that helps. I will say the first house on the right and the first house on the left are quite close to the property lines, just to take into consideration. But I, you know, again, I appreciate the fact that you you are very mindful in your approach to this of protecting the privacy and the buffering of the residents around, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Others?
My name's Steve Pardue. I live at 367 Tuttle, which would abut the back of the proposed subdivision. And I also am right against the right-of-way. And like somebody had mentioned before, you know, I, you know, I'm not against development back there, but when I purchased back in 2017, I came to the town to see what might be able to be developed back there. And I relied on the subdivision rules. And at the time, I had spoke to Bill Wyatt about that. And, you know, I just, the buffering for me, especially since the majority of my lot faces all of this development, that, that road to get in between our houses is a very tight road. There's, there's very little room for error on either side, so I don't know how they would achieve the buffering. So, you know, I just like to say, you know, to look at the existing rules that are in place now in considerate, you know, like I purchased it based on what was around. And I love the feel of town center. I work in town center. I live in town center. I have three children that go to the schools. It's great, but I think if you got rid of those buffers, like somebody had mentioned before, we set ourselves up to allow other people to do it, especially with the state pushing these, you know, making room for more housing. And those kind of lots, you know, where at my house, I think, needs to be on a 10,000 square foot. I had to, when I, my septic failed and I went to sewer, you know, I had seen some plans before where they had asked about putting lots back and those were some years ago, and I don't know if somebody could look at that, but they were told back then that there were, you know, maybe could be a couple lots, three, but the buffering for me is huge. I mean, you're talking seven houses. Most houses have 14 cars coming and going. Come right out through there. That is a busy section. Kids are walking to school. It's hard enough for me to get out of my driveway. I have to back in my lot to pull out safely, so. But again, you know, I appreciate what you do. Part of the reason why I'm here in Cumberland is the feel of it. You know, it's a nice, small-town feel. And I think cramming eight houses back there would, you know, there's those nice hedge trees that Joe spoke about that really blocks everything. But, you know, if that goes away and the buffer to the back and down lower like that, the first house on the left and right are just right, right, right there, but that's, that's all. And, you know, I, you know, some concessions, you know, if you have to reduce it some, but to take it away entirely is, you know, I'm not really for that.
Thank you. Others from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to the board for final comments. Anyone?
Well, only that I think Eric's listening and taking notes and I hope, I don't know, is the next step another sketch plan or preliminary?
Oh, I think it's another sketch plan, for sure, yeah.
To, because I certainly would, after hearing those comments, be very reluctant, you know, to impose on people that have, you know, expected something different. It would be very important to me, one of seven.
Anyone else from the board? Josh? Okay, so I guess to summarize, and certainly I think the public comment carries great weight here. I think that what I'm hearing is that there's support to have five or more houses potentially there, between five and seven. We shall see. I think that I'm hearing that the buffer is the biggest issue and taking that away will be done very sparingly. So to me, I don't think the sketches we have in front of us are, we can adopt or, you know, have any consensus to run with one of, either of them. So I think we do another sketch plan review and see what you come up with, I guess. And taking in everything that you've heard here tonight and hopefully we can come to a compromise that still works for the applicant.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. I know this is, it's a tough one. But again, just to be clear, we're not talking about taking the buffer away. We don't think, for one, we don't think that would be the right thing for this property or the, or the houses in general, so.
Yep.
So we do think that's, that's pretty important. A natural buffer, again, we agree with that, so.
Yep. We look forward to seeing the next round and really fleshing it out and getting creative.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Jason, Carla, do we need official closure on this? Should we make a motion to table? Would that be the? I mean, it's sketch plan review. I'm not sure we really- It's weird and morphous.
It's not the beginning of the formal process. I don't think you'd need to table it.
Good question, though. I wondered that.
I don't think we have before, no. Okay, so moving on, administrative matters. I guess there are some signatures needed tonight. Anything else from the board for administrative matters or new business?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I do. I am wondering when we are going to start to focus on LD 2003. Because there is, I mean, there's a lot of work to be done.
Yes. I've actually put together a presentation, PowerPoint. I apologize, but it's easy way to convey information. And I can send that out to you once I finish it, hopefully next week. I attended a American Planning Association conference two weeks ago. It was in California. And California has something called SB 9. And it's even more pushing for density throughout the state. Many speakers about the challenges of that. What Maine is doing, I hadn't realized that this was happening all over the country. It's particularly happening out in the western states, which I find interesting because of their lack of water. But nevertheless, they're talking about quadrupling density everywhere. But there are lessons learned from what the planners and the communities out there are doing. So I'm going to share that with you in this presentation. More immediately, the Chair of the Town Council, Bob Vale, has been asking Bill Shane and myself to help him put together some type of a charge that the council would appoint a committee to look at housing. And one of, I worked on that today. And one of the pieces of the charge was that we begin looking at that. And this committee might be a good way to do that. So we're very, to use the Joe Campbell word, we're very mindful of it. And we know it's coming and we know we're going to have to work around with our ordinances. And it's a little over a year away. It goes into effect July 1st. But we're on it and I'll be sharing some information with you shortly.
Carla, do we, we don't have really a ton of discretion, do we?
No.
I mean, there's not a lot of work we can, maybe some work to understand what can get shoved down the throat of-
Well, our ordinances are going to have to be changed, aren't they?
Absolutely.
I mean, all our ordinances-
Do the, do the ordinances actually have to be changed?
Yes.
Yes. Minimum lot sizes, setbacks, everything, subdivision two, you know, everything we did with the conservation subdivision. What, I know.
It can't just be a layer that falls through?
I don't, I don't think so.
Gosh, that's a lot.
I don't know how we would do that. It's going to really be a complete overhaul, I think.
Save this one.
Of land use.
Don't. It may come, I said, don't, you may want to save this version to revert to at some point in the future.
All right.
Anything else? New business from the board? Okay, item H, do we hear a motion?
I move. Do we adjourn?
Discussion, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Carla, how many, there are just two, two things we signed?
They're the same plan, but they gave us two copies, so if you want to sign them, you can.
We have to sign in the same place, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
I've never thought about that, Peter. I guess it-
What work are we going to do?
Why don't you just do one copy?
I thought, if it's an ordinance, wouldn't it be an ordinance committee?